Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the 1022 work session to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. All school board members are in attendance with the exception of Ms. Cleary and Ms. Shonda. I will now provide recognition of guests and scheduled speakers to Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we start that, I just want to make an executive session announcement, if I may. The Board of School Directors met in executive session on 10/1/2024 virtually to discuss future collective bargaining contract negotiations with Methactin Education Support Professional Association and Teamsters. That ends the executive session announcement, and I'll move on to guests and scheduled speakers.
Before we speak, before we start, can we introduce somebody new to our table? This way everyone is aware of the new member here.
We have someone new?
Yes, we do. Welcome.
We want to welcome Kimberly Steffi. Kimberly came to us from Fensbury School District, and we're happy to have her here as our new Director of Business Services. Kimberly is on day, I believe, 15 with us, or 12, 12. So she corrected me already. See, she's, she knows her math. But we're really happy to have her, and certainly we expect some great things out of her, and certainly I want you to get an opportunity to meet her, and we will certainly welcome her to the Methactin family. So with that, we have guests and scheduled speakers. So for tonight, we have a number of presentations, and then next week, we have the Spirit of Methactin, the M Awards for both Alphetics and M Awards for last year's Arcola students. So for this evening, our first presentation, we have Dr. Sorgini, Mr. Kenwood, and Mr. Grice presenting the Master Facilities Plan update. Dr. Sorgini.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Tonight, we are presenting to the Board proposed revisions to the 2023 to 2033 Master Facilities Plan. The amended plan was developed in conjunction with our owner's representative, CHA Consulting. The updated plan represents adjustments to the 2023 plan developed by our then architectural firm KCBA, which was derived from the 2022 Bureau Veritas Facilities Assessment Report, and supplementary information, including roofing studies from Mark J. Sobek Roof Consulting, HVAC information from Moore Engineering, and pavement information from the Kircher Group. In developing this plan, the intent is to provide a roadmap to the district that takes into account the following five priorities. The facilities inventory of assets, which provides a detailed assessment of age, condition, and expected life cycle of all components. Annual budget constraints and integration with other funding and borrowing considerations, which takes into account the district's ability to afford and properly fund the identified facilities needs across all assets while also addressing a larger project on the high school campus. The organization of potential projects is intended to identify economies of scale, rather, to drive cost savings for greater efficiency of project execution. The prioritization of projects is an assessment of life, safety, and health concerns, of which there are none, and an assurance that the building envelopes and major systems are addressed. Finally, the ability to manage and oversee projects involves a predetermined schedule of effort to ensure that the district has the personnel bandwidth to undertake the identified projects. Based on these five factors, the initial 10-year Master Facilities Plan is proposed to be expanded to a 13-year plan that allows priorities to be realized in the most efficient and appropriate manner based on the current information and projected need. It is important to note that the plan as presented tonight is in draft format and will require fluidity in the coming years based on annual updates of evolving priorities and needs. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Josh Grice with CHA Consulting, the engineer of record overseeing the implementation of the master plan. Josh?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Sorgini. As Dr. Sorgini mentioned, this is a draft update at this time. We've been combing through all the prior reports over the past couple of months and really coming up with projects that we seem to make sense from a grouping perspective and from a timing perspective. There was a tremendous amount of information, as you're well aware, within those Bureau Veritas reports and others. But in front of you now is a pretty succinct one-page summary of groupings of projects. You'll kind of see that in some cases, the focus is on infrastructure, meaning systems, whether it's electrical, HVAC, or similar. And as Dr. Sorgini mentioned, this plan does currently take us out to the year 2037. There was really no magical number or intent to provide a certain end date for this, but looking at some of the larger priority projects and how they could be spread out over the next 10 or so years kind of landed us at the 2037 end date. So we do have a couple of things slated for 2025, which are currently in progress. One of them is actually the chiller replacement at Worcester Elementary. That project had been put out to bid last year already, and just based on product lead times and impact to the HVAC operation, that will be implemented this upcoming summer. I know that Mr. Kenwood also has some proposals for some state contract work related to HVAC controls. So those numbers are being firmed up for 2025 implementation. And we've also got another project currently targeted here at this campus, which would be for some mill and overlay improvements to parking areas and to access drives. And without going into too many details related to each project, those are sort of the on-deck projects for 2025. We're also looking into a potential roof replacement at Worcester. That roof is to the end of its anticipated lifespan. There will be some investigations and some additional work related to a final recommendation, whether there could be a potential rehabilitation of that system or a complete replacement, which we've currently budgeted for a complete replacement, just to be conservative. A couple of things that, as mentioned in the committee meeting last time, there are some projects that are planned for this building, Skyview, Arcola, Skyola, Skycola, whatever you guys want to call it, that I think really are going to require some additional board level input. We've targeted system replacements related to boilers, chillers, HVAC equipment, some systems upgrades, some minor architectural finishes upgrades. But it's certainly not to the level of a complete renovation of spaces, and that's one of the things that I think we want to talk to the board about. Are the educational spaces being used to their full potential? Are there any other changes to the floor plan, the layout, the instructional delivery methods that maybe would cause us to take a look at maybe some additional renovation scopes within this facility? Okay. Some of the things also that have been adjusted, we did also look at more of a renovation to the transportation building at the high school campus. I believe the prior plan indicated a completely new facility for that department with transportation. And there've been a couple of other adds, deducts, and shifts of timing with this plan. Again, this is what we consider a living document, so priorities can be updated, budgets can be updated annually, and that is the intent moving forward, is that we will provide continual updates to this master plan. Are there any questions in particular before we move along about any of the slated projects or timing?
Are there any questions to members to my right at this moment? Seeing none to my left, Ms. Perdue?
Just a quick question. And I know you indicated this is just draft. As things change, and you mentioned the Worcester chiller replacement is already in progress, and then new things get added, how will you be differentiating that on here? Like the Worcester chiller, shouldn't we have it so it's indicating that it's already in progress already on here?
We can certainly do that, whether it's a footnote or some type of asterisk indicating the status of it. We can certainly implement that moving forward.
Yeah, I think that may be helpful. And then if something new get added, maybe I see there's a date up ahead, maybe it may be helpful if something new get added. I mean, it'll go to property, but maybe we'll find it, just so we know what's changed on here, then that's when we look at it. Thank you.
Okay, Doug, I believe you're gonna, so I'm gonna turn the next few slides over to Mr. Kenwood. He's gonna take us through another few sets of slides here.
Thank you, Josh. The major revisions to the master facility plan are a result of a number of factors. The projects detailed on the plan were moved backwards and forwards based on revised district needs, budget considerations, and the ability to manage the projects. Smaller capital projects were broken out from large-scale interior renovations to address, excuse me, to address more immediate needs. The high school zone renovation projects, the high school site improvement project, and the Farina Education Center renovation project were removed from the plan. In addition, the cost estimates were updated based on recent bid results, and the plan was expanded, as Josh mentioned, and Dr. Sorgini, an additional four years. Some of the more notable additions to the plan include roofing work at Skyview and Arcola in 2029, Skyview Proper in 2035, and Woodland in 2037. And as Josh mentioned, the transportation building project was changed from a new construction project to a renovation project. In closing, I just want to stress that the plan is in draft format. It's fluid and will be updated as unanticipated needs arise. And in the absence of any unanticipated needs, the plan will be updated on an annual basis. Thank you, and if anyone has any additional questions, we'll certainly take those.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini, Mr. Grice, and Mr. Kenwood. Are there any questions from members to my right? Any questions from members to my left? Ms. Perdue?
Sorry, just a clarification. For the Skyview, I see you have the roofing projects. Skyview, Arcola, and then Skyview, can you differentiate between the two? Thank you.
Yes, the Skyview, Arcola roofing systems are, the way I think about it, is the section of Arcola that was annexed to Skyview when Skyview was built. So it's not as what I would think of as Arcola. It's really that intermediate section. And then the Skyview roofing systems are, were new with the 2009 construction of Skyview.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none. All right. So approximately a month ago, the Board of School Directors approved us contracting with Flow Analytics to conduct a student enrollment forecast. Members of the Board, you have a copy of this in front of you, and it is titled Preliminary Student Enrollment Forecast. If we take a look at what we have for you this evening, as you recall, Flow Analytics was going to do the demographic and residential development analysis, the enrollment assessment, enrollment forecasting, and then the final reporting. They are on target to do that this evening. As part of our discussion, they provided me with one figure from that report that we provided in about a week and a half. And that figure is not the full or final report, but it is one of the figures that will be provided in the full and final report, and the figure represents preliminary K-12 forecast under low, middle, which is most likely, according to them, and in high scenarios. So if we look at this on the third and final slide of the presentation, you will see, and the purpose, and again, of course, the purpose of this conversation and the purpose of the, of getting the forecast was really twofold. One, it was to make certain that any decision that we're making on October 29th was not absent of information associated with either a sharp decline or a sharp increase in the overall student forecast. And as you can see here this evening, it's very similar and in line with the previous forecast that Flow had conducted approximately three years ago. And it does indicate that we're likely to remain steady if we use the middle or most likely scenario as it's outlined. So for example, you will see that for the 2425 school year, we have about 4,500 students with projection of 2526, about 40, another 45. As we continue through, we get about to 203435, we would see us possibly jump to about 4,600 students. Certainly not a significant change in either direction, so it is reasonably fair as part of my discussion with the folks from Flow Analytics that the Board can consider the enrollment forecast to indicate that we're likely to have a flat enrollment for the next 10 years. So with that, I'll be glad to take questions, but I do know that some other reasons for doing the analytic report was to determine specific challenges or potential challenges of enrollment in the Worcester Elementary School, given the conversation about whether or not to add on classrooms or to potentially redistrict in the future. And these things all fall into some of the master facilities plan conversations. So with that said, this presentation here this evening certainly doesn't answer any of that, but it gives us a fair indication that we're on target with a status quo in terms of our enrollment forecast. Questions from members of the Board at this point? Thank you very much. And then on the next presentation.
Dr. Zerbi, we have some questions.
Sure, I'll take them then.
So I think this graphic, if I'm reading this correctly, the potential for the high increase would be about a 10% increase in enrollment.
If I recall correctly, it's hard to read the numbers from here.
I want to say it's 4,983 versus 2324 enrollment of 4,608.
Yeah, we're seeing.
So roughly 400 increase, which would be about a little less than 10%. So when we look at a 10% increase at the high school, how does that change our enrollment numbers there?
Well, I think that the the good news is that when we look at the way we're building for the high school, when we talk about building for 1,600 students as an example, that is the, that is the number that is 80% of the actual capacity within that particular building. So we're actually building for, if we're building two capacity, it'd be for about 1,800 students rather than 1,600 students.
So our enrollment at the high school currently is?
1,500 students.
So if we took 1,500 and added the 10% onto it, we'd be at 1,650, and so our proposed construction is at around 1,600.
Correct. I think it's 1,645.
Okay, so we're just under the 1,650. That would be the high estimate of this enrollment projection.
The high estimate of the projection at the 80% PDE recommended level.
Right. So we're actually under, we're oversizing space versus what PDE allows, so we could actually accommodate more kids within the space we would have.
That is correct.
Based on the projected enrollment. So the proposed high school design actually accommodates the high projection per this graphic and information.
It will.
Okay. And then the second question I had was just related, and you may not be able to answer this. We may need to wait for the full report, was what's the probability differential between like the high or low versus the middle? You know, if the middle is, there's an 80% probability of the middle being accurate? Or, and maybe we don't know that.
I don't have that answer. It's a great question.
It'll be in the report, I imagine.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, this is the only figure that I have. We went through some of the other figures, just to kind of view them, see where we're status-wise. I can tell you that they're just about done with the final report, but given the circumstances and the timing that we're in, I think it was important for the Board to at least understand that, you know, overall, district-wide, we are in a status quo, flat enrollment period, so we can at least, you know, preliminarily plan for the future, given this information.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Perdue?
And I mean, I think we'll get this when we get the full report. I think this is helpful to have the, the, I guess, the projected high and low, if we're looking into the high school project with trying to look at potential, if there's potential enrollment or if that will stay flat. What I was going to ask is, and I'm hoping we will get, when the full report is available, it will provide any assumptions that they use into this, like the major assumptions.
Yeah, so I think what you'll find is they'll take into account all of the potential development in the district, the current demographics. It'll take into the history to date of our enrollment, including our most recent October 1 enrollment, which is, which is right on, right on target. And then it will provide the forecast and a report that will outline where some of the, even by building, where we can anticipate potential growth and potential decline. And it's what we've used in the past when we've closed buildings or considered, considered doing, you know, shifts of our student population based on the availability of size. And I think, I think most importantly, at least initially, we're trying to figure out, you know, what is the right approach for the Worcester Elementary School with respect to this. Aside from the high school, we were trying to determine whether or not, you know, doing a shift of the students or actually building would make sense. And I think it's going to be a longer conversation with that based on what I've seen preliminarily.
So that report will go, will provide an analysis based on the buildings also?
Yeah, it's done by every building, correct, for the same timeframe.
Perfect. When would the final report be available again?
Likely in a week and a half.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll, we'll schedule that to be part of one of our either committee meetings and then bring it to the full board, and we'll post it online for the public to see. Any other questions on the enrollment forecast? Seeing no other questions, we'll go on to the next presentation. So next week, on October 29th, the motion before the Board is to approve the Schrader Group Architects and CHA District Owner's Representative to proceed with schematic design and design development phases of a new high school campus at an estimated cost of $3 million. And note, this motion includes all phases up to and including the required Act 34 hearing. Again, the Act 34 hearing is a legal matter that requires the district to provide public notice and then to provide public input if they were to consider construction of a new school. On the, on the third slide, this is very familiar to many of you that have been following this process, and this is just summarily a recap of all that we've done for the last two and a half years. The Methacton High School, we understand that there is some minimum campus investments that are required based on the 2023 Facilities Assessment. We've also been very consistent with our approach to understanding what we're trying to do. We're trying to develop a comprehensive plan that considers the educational, operational, financial context to ensure that the future investments in the Methacton High School campus support the mission of the district and vision for the high school for the next 50 years. In addition, we have in this presentation a summary timeline. It's not all the action items, but a majority of them, and it dates back to 2016. There's some dates in 2018, 2020, 2022, 2023, with a lot of most recent meetings, presentations, gatherings in 2023 and 2024. It actually takes us all the way up to this evening where we're looking at the updated Master Facilities Plan as delivered by the team of Dr. Sorgini, Mr. Grice, and the team of Dr. Sergini, Mr. Grice and Mr. Kenwood, as well as a preliminary enro- uh a preliminary enrollment forecast. And really, this timeline uh that it includes up many opportunities along the way, and I mean many. Uh, not just in the most current year, but certainly over the last uh two years. Include many opportunities for public input. It's had several surveys associated with it. We had planning sessions where we brought uh some uh hundred and forty individuals from our our school community to help uh look at our facilities, to tour our our current high school, to tour other renovated and newly constructed high schools. To consider, like on slide, on slide eight, to consider in place renovation, to consider the costs associated with renovation plus, you know, additional uh auditorium and auditorium additions uh and and additional classroom additions and new construction. On slide nine, it considered basically a priority list and how those options would uh best play in terms of completing or some some partial completion of of those priorities, given the option that we proceed forward. It included a review of the educational impact as outlined in in uh in slide ten. We looked at the educational spaces. Uh, Dr. Regina presented all the uh Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee top educational priorities, and they're kind of in a word mash on the screen there, best fit that in there. And it speaks and those words kind of speak to what we what we had in in those conversations in terms of opportunities about collaborative spaces, about program, about learning. Those are the key words. Those are the words that we are are building for. We also had, as in as we presented in slide eleven, an initial financial impact summary where we talked about being able to continue our focus on student performance, program development, exceptional educational experience and exit academic excellence. Continue our focus on recruiting, retaining and developing employees and doing all that with our focus on addressing the facilities, including the construction of a new high school campus. We also recognize that any path forward is going to require a additional uh tax uh burden uh on our on our public. We recognize that one way or another, whether we're going to do option uh one with renovation, option one or option two with renovations, some new construction, all the way up to option four, we know that there was going to be an impact uh on our taxpayers. But we also know that uh from our financial analysis of uh from P F M, there are ways that we can manage through that. Uh, we are in in an excellent position uh to take on the challenge and take on the challenge. Uh, not only uh with the borrowing of two hundred million for a new high school, but also uh with being able to keep our priority focus on academic excellence and 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 to our staffing. We've also had presentation as outlined on slide twelve, uh what those next steps are. So if the board on on next Tuesday decide to proceed forward, we know that the schematic design uh timeline and dates and decision processes are outlined on the slide that was presented last month. And we look at slide thirteen. This is the motion. And while we spent a lot of time having conversations about the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Process, I first want to thank all the members of the school board for their participation in the process. There have been many meetings that you've attended. Uh, certainly, there's been many uh uh communications that and and documents that you you've read through. Uh, you've participated in a number of the uh uh public forums. Um, and and it is, it is for you next week uh to determine based on your your elected uh status to determine whether or not we should proceed forward with uh the motion as presented. So with that said, uh if there are any questions related to the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Process that we can answer for you this evening, before we uh 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 have the motion in front of you next week, we'd be glad to do that. Members of our team are here uh this evening. We'll be glad to answer any of those questions. Are there any questions this evening? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, so the only the only question is the same question I asked, I think, uh last month around um. If you go to slide twelve, please. So it talks about that the motion goes through the stage of including Act thirty four hearing and gets us past the schematic and the design development. But we do have a decision point scheduled uh scheduled for two twenty five.
Yes.
Um, so I'm just making sure contractionally, you know, things can change. If, and my understanding is that it was about one third of the way through the three point two plus million dollars would be at that point. I'm just wondering if we've written the contract, if there's a decision not to proceed with schematic beyond the schematic design, what what is our responsibility for the additional two million dollars?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Grace? Can you answer that part, please?
Uh, sure. So we have provided a breakdown of fee by phase. Just uh to get us through schematic design, design development and then construction documents. Um, obviously, within the contract, there would be clauses for notice of termination uh by owner, termination for cause, termination for convenience, um all of which basically would, you know, be the district paying for services provided up to that point. So, you know, without referencing the exact language in the contract, there's always the opportunity at those decision points to break from uh that process.
I have a question. Um, so my question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mercy has.
Oh, I thought he said.
Sorry. So my question is related. Uh, the last meeting we had, which was roughly ten days ago, I asked that we include the approximate cost at each of those decision points. It's related to Paul's question, but uh I still don't see that. So I'd like to see that.
So that uh document was provided in uh our Friday memo. Um, I can share that information with you now. Can you read this?
I could, yes. So um for these schematic design phase fee, now we've also included some estimated costs related to uh the land development process, whether it's uh submissions or assuming that you will engage the solicitor into zoning hearing board meetings, those types of things. So we did include also some numbers for those efforts as well. So the number that I'm about to read is not indicative of only the C H A and Schrader Group fees. But for example, schematic design fee at one million seven hundred forty one thousand four hundred. Design development fee at one million five hundred thirteen thousand four hundred thirty seven. So that's the breakdown of the three point two that you had seen previously. Sure. So um following that Act thirty four process through design development, the next phase would be construction documents. And again, all of these phases really just increase the level of detail, level of documentation, getting ready for the bidding of the project. So in the construction documents phase, we would be anticipating a um an amount of two million seven hundred sixty eight thousand three hundred thirty. And then a bidding phase of four hundred twenty two thousand two hundred twenty.
Thank you.
Oh, except for construction, but yeah.
Obviously, yeah. So the only the only phase that's not included there is a construction phase, and that gets us through the the bidding process. Yep.
I didn't ask for that. So, thank you.
Ms. Graff?
Yeah, so um Mr. Grice can probably answer this question. Are these uh estimated costs? Are they time and materials or lump sum?
These are lump sum. Um, for example, the C H A contract specifically did not break them out by phases. We have assigned um based on our best judgment of effort per phase, what that would be approximately. Uh, Schrader Group, I believe, is a little bit different in that they did provide a um spreadsheet of fees by phase. So those numbers, and Devin can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I believe those numbers are also lump sum numbers for that phase.
So do we have a lump sum number for each phase? And is the contract written such that if we get to two twenty five and we say, okay, we're stopping at this point, the fee due to the architect would be their lump sum amount that got us to that point? Or is it lump sum for the whole project and we would have to then decide how much percentage has been completed?
It would be by phase, I believe, for the Schrader Group. And again, it's different for C H A in that we basically have a design phase fee and a construction phase fee, but we did, you know, based on the request of the board, try to break that up into each schematic C D and D D phase. Um, I would suggest that if there are specific contractual questions, that they would be directed to your solicitor with review of the actual contract. I don't want to misspeak tonight about fee structure and and what fees are due when and um if there are anything that following termination, if it would come to that, that may still need to be paid, I I would suggest that you review that document with solicitor input to get the final determination of that.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so for Schrader Group's fees, we are based on an estimated construction cost. So that construction cost that we're basing the project off of is, I think, is a hundred and sixty million dollars for the full project. Uh, five percent of that is for schematic design of the whatever. I think it's three point nine five percent is what our total fee is based off of that construction cost. So for the two twenty five uh board uh decision, you would be uh paying five percent of the fee for us and then additional ten percent for the design development portion.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. My other question is, although we have these decision points in the middle, and maybe Schrader may be the answer to this one. Um, when we get to schematic design, there's a point at which that work has been completed. And are you, are you then on hold until that approval? Or do you continue to move forward pending nonapproval, I guess, is what I should say.
So uh we can do it either way. Um, if there is a decision from the administration team to have us move forward, uh, we can do that, but uh we really need the approval of the each phase to move contractually into the next phase. So maybe if there's uh some some goodwill, we can move forward without that, but uh contractually, we would be required for that approval.
And the reason I'm asking is because there's this, once you do schematic design, there's a month after that for the actual estimate to be completed, and I assume that estimate is coming from C H A.
So the estimate, we we give them a package at about ninety percent of each phase. They build their estimate off of that, and then we complete that extra ten percent up to that date.
Okay.
So the approval would be based off of a hundred percent, but the estimate would be off of a a previous package.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? Ms. Perdue?
I just have one. Um, and I'm just wondering, on slide ten, where we have the educational impact summary, are the things listed here? Are are there going to be more discussions on some of the um aspects listed here, like we have curriculum spaces, special education spaces and high school spaces? Or are these like, because I I know the instructional planning centers was brought up before, and I believe we received feedback from the teachers. And so I'm just wondering why that's still on here? Is that something that's just on here just based on some of the initial schools that we visited or is just wanted to clear?
Yeah, that's a that's a fair question. Uh, this kind of represents a summary of the the presentation that Dr. Regina and a number of other administrators and teachers actually presented uh more than a month ago. Uh, so it talks about the the four or three types of spaces that they they spoke about. So instructional planning centers was one of them. Um, and then the word mashup was just a quick way to kind of get everything uh from the priorities into a a graphic for your for for representing that feedback. But but this is, this has no new information on it than what was presented uh when we did the educational impact presentation.
I guess my question is, and I I know that's not, we still have more pending items. What I'm asking is in reference to the instructional planning centers, at what point is there a decision or do a decision need to be made on instruction planning centers or no instruction planning centers?
Well, I I think that uh besides instructional planning centers, uh shared laboratory spaces, and I'm sure there's a number of other matters that uh we're going to need to be able to make decisions on at some time in the future. Some of those decisions could be made prior to going out the bid. Some of those decisions could be made as alternates in a bidding process. So as an example, uh I'll just say we have, our base bid is going to be where we uh teacher would get their their individual classroom, and an alternate bid would be uh the buil- the building of the school with, you know, eleven I P C uh uh setup. So so then we could determine at the conclusion or the the recipi- the receipt of the the bids, whether or not um we want to take one item or or take the alternate because of its financial, you know, benefit uh to move the project forward. So there's a number of ways we can do that. Um, the 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 challenge uh is if when we move forward on the twenty ninth, there there will not only be the things that we've already talked about. There are likely to be some additional things that we need to discuss. Um, and certainly, some of those things might be coming before the board as part of the educational committee. Uh, they might be coming in front of the board as part of the property committee, finance committee, and certainly as a board of whole. So there's a lot of involvement, uh not only from our teachers and students in our community if we proceed forward, but certainly there'll be, you know, a heightened involvement of members of the board.
Okay, thank you, because I do see where we have student input there. So I guess that should also include teacher input maybe, and I think like you said, there's more to come. I had a quick question on slide number three, and I just wanted to um maybe for information. The final total campus investment number that's listed here in slide number three. Can you um summarize for me, how is that different from what's provided on slide number eight in reference to the in place renovation?
Well, what I'll do is I'll I'll speak to this slide and then I'll ask uh Mr. Grice, who presented the the other options back in February of two thousand twenty four, to talk about that that difference. But the slide that you see here actually are the 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 matters that are associated specifically with uh the re- the replacement of of uh of assets within these three facilities uh that come from the Bureau Veritas report. And again, these are specifically to the replacements of those assets. And then, Mr. Grice, the when we talk about options, one, two, three, how did we determine that um, you know, those those are at a hundred million dollars and up?
The question is related to the first three options back in February. Is that? Uh, okay, so the February presentation of the first three options, as I recall it, the first option one was an in place renovation of the high school. So it was basically um renovation square uh cost per square foot numbers. Um, options two and three then expanded into um additional areas of renovation, including a new pool and a new auditorium, so several key new spaces with the the rest being renovation. I believe um option three, as I recall, just expanded the amount of new construction versus renovation of the existing footprint. I can find that uh presentation shortly here. Okay, so option one of in place renovation. And all of these options at the time um also did not include any work related to a field house construction. So there there were some other um overall project scope changes that were not captured in these first couple options. But again, option one, in place renovation. A portion of the building, then the, I believe, the latest portion. Um, the the Breslin project was slated for M E P, meaning mechanical electrical plumbing only, with no work happening in the main gym. Um, option two included. Option two included renovation plus auditorium and naterium additions. So those two areas of the building would become new construction. And then option three included auditorium, naterium additions, as well as a new classroom addition. So a portion of the building being renovated for instructional spaces and also an addition of classroom spaces under option three. Obviously, option four, A and B, was for totally new construction, the difference of which was the square foot of the building. For A was targeted at 308,000 square feet and for B was targeted at 345,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, and thank you for reviewing the options. So for the in-place renovation that we have there, that did not include the admin building or the transportation building, right? It's just, and I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is. And my question is really on option one. With all the other options, the difference in the price for option one, two, and then what we have on slide three, is it just a matter of when we had the report, that's just the estimate? Or is the in-place renovation price, like what else is included? I guess I'm looking at the difference in?
For in-place renovation, we had a square foot cost, which included $140 per square foot for HVAC, electrical plumbing, $60 per square foot for GC-related work, you know, finishes, maybe some minor architectural interior wall revisions, and then exterior window replacements. So that total came out to about $215 per square foot, as an example, for in-place renovation. To answer the prior question, the district admin office was an in-place renovation of the current footprint. So that did not incorporate any district office space within the high school.
I think I can answer the question. I think the question is, on slide three, the Methacton High School minimum cost is $69 million. On slide eight, option one, which is identified as a renovation, is approximately $95 to $99,000, $99 million. So what's the difference between the 69 million to the 95 million? I think the difference is, the 69 million was replacement of HVAC, boilers, plumbing systems, so that it was just interior, what we would call building systems replacements. The renovation cost included finishes, ventilators in the classrooms, it included some new finishes throughout the building, new flooring, things that were in addition to just the systems themselves. So I think that answers your question.
Yeah, that's the part that I wanted to have clarified. I just think is, like, when you look at this and you look at the other slide, those, it just is not clear. And I think I just wanted a little bit more information on what the differences are. So thank you. That's helpful.
Other questions, Ms. Alston?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, further exploring the differences of these costs, I'm looking at slide 11 here. And we've been talking and have had myriad reports about the educational impact and our why of doing this at all, right? The educational impact of spaces, of learning, of programs. And I am wondering why we keep using this $100 million number for renovations? Because if we're talking apples to apples, then really to have a renovation that gets us anywhere close to the educational programmings we're striving for, we're really looking at the 148 to 156 number. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you're making an excellent point where, and I'm just going to go back to this one slide, I know you're on that slide, but this is a slide you're referring to. I think you're talking about, you know, we're really, if we're trying to equate, and I'm just going to rephrase, and if I'm incorrect, you know, correct me, please. But I think what you're saying, you know, we really should be talking about the delta between, you know, 148, 156 and, say, 200 million as an example, versus talking about the delta between 100 and 200. Because while those two deltas are different in terms of actual dollars, they're significantly different and very wide in terms of their impact. And one is going to be generally keeping the same educational program in place. There are no new improvements. We're not adding things like the apartment program. We're not fixing, you know, the stage area. We're not fixing the hallway congestion challenges. I mean, many of you have sat through all of these conversations over the last two and a half years, and we're not really making any educational impact or climate impact into that school. But we will be replacing motors. We will have some new impact in terms of air conditioning and we'll still be able to operate as a school. So I want to make sure that, I reiterate maybe what you're getting at, because I think that is an important part. And certainly, that was the whole reason we had Dr. Regina and the team come and present more than a month ago about the educational program and the impact it would have. And I thought they did an outstanding job of making sure that, you know, these changes and these opportunities are going to be significant for our students, not only tomorrow or in four years or five years, but for the next 30, 50 years.
Yeah, that is very much my point, that we should not be talking on any, in any rate about the 100 million. I mean, we can mention the 100 million as the necessary input to maintain our systems in our building, but what we have been talking about, why would we do that? You know, what we've been talking about is where we want to get educationally in the school with, you know, we're listening to the teacher input, we had presentations from the students. We're doing all this to get somewhere. And I think, I think that 100 million should be replaced with a more accurate figure when you're talking about, especially with right above it, you're talking about the educational goals. And I don't, I do not think we should be continuing to talk about the 100 million dollars.
No, I certainly appreciate your point on that. And certainly, I clearly understand, if we're going to be comparing future education, it's got to be between those two deltas versus the 100 million. So you're spot on. Thank you for showing that. Ms. Steele?
Thank you so much. I just want to piggyback a little bit off of what Ms. Drummond was saying. I'm so sorry, Alston. I'm so sorry. What Ms. Alston was saying, only because, as she was saying, you know, that education impact is why we're all here. And the renovations captured in one, two, and three, they, and the auditorium, obviously, and the naterium, but they don't get to all the problematic spaces in the high school, right? Like, there are places in the high school that are not on the priority list, such as a gym that needs to be refloored every year and an area that floods a lot that needs to be addressed. Those aren't even on those priority lists in the current building, correct? Am I understanding that?
Well, I'm hearing what you're saying, and I just want to add this to your comment. I think there's two things to consider. We had Ms. Alston talk about, you know, are we doing this for the educational program? And if so, this is, the delta should be between three and four. And if we're doing it to actually fix all the challenges that were brought up by our students, by our staff, by our school community, you really need to be in four. And that's, and that's the challenge, because you will, you will not address all the matters. You will not address all the parking, the congestion in the parking lots. You will not, you will not address those matters. And certainly, there will be things that will be left undone, based on all that we've seen and all that we've uncovered and certainly all that we've studied. So I think, I think those are two key elements for your consideration as a board of school directors, that, you know, if we were to, if we are to proceed forward, at least doing the schematic design and doing the design development, we're going to be in a much better position to achieve the educational objectives that we've set out and to achieve the resolution to all the challenges on the campus by taking that path forward. So I hope that was consistent with what you were thinking.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other, any other comments? I want to make sure that everyone is comfortable. I know this, it's a huge decision for the board of school directors, and I want, again, want to thank you for all your patience in the process and certainly want to make sure that you are comfortable, knowing that we've done our due diligence and making sure that we provided you the information necessary for you to be comfortable making decisions before. When I say comfortable, it's certainly, I don't mean it'd be easy. I mean, it'd be that you're informed and you know that our mission to develop a comprehensive campus plan is at the forefront of all of our objective outcomes. So with that said, thank you for your time this evening, and we'll continue on with So that ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. We'll go on to reports and then to public comment when we meet next week. We also have fiscal items for your consideration. Ms. Steffi, do you want to review the fiscal items with the board?
Sure. There are seven fiscal items tonight for consideration. Nine A, listed bills. Nine B, treasurer's report. Nine C, budgetary transfers. There are no budgetary transfers this month. Nine D, environmental survey. Approve Environmental Control Systems, Inc. to conduct an environmental survey of Methacton High School and other ancillary campus buildings at a cost of $16,147.50, with the option of up to 20 additional asbestos bulk samples as required at a unit cost of $34.75. Nine E, tax collection committee representatives. Approve Resolution 24-05 regarding the appointment of Kimberly Steffi and Danielle Penza to the tax collection committee as presented. Nine F, management trustee appointment. Approve Kimberly Steffi as a Methacton School District trustee on the Bucs-Montgomery Healthcare Consortium effective October 30, 2024. Nine G, bond resolution. Approve Resolution 24-06 as prepared by bond counsel, authorizing the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in an amount necessary to fund an approximate $15 million deposit to the project fund for repairs, upgrades, and new construction to the high school and other projects associated with the facility's master plan as approved by the school board and to pay cost of issuance.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board to my right? Mr. Winters?
I know it's going to be called out, but the semantics of the last one there, where it says $15 million deposit in the project fund for repairs, upgrades, and new construction, can we change that as an or? Or is it a aspect of requirement that we're going to vote on this? It doesn't look like we are. We would be voting on this prior to the vote on proceeding with the high school.
Yeah, I think that it allows, I think the motion designed by the, by the bond counsel to include all possibilities. So you?
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand that. It's not the way it's written, though. That's my only point. Symmatically, it's saying and, not or.
So you're suggesting change the and/or?
Yes, I know. It sounds.
All right. Are there any other questions to my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just want to note, we had discussion about this in property committee. This is the approval for the environmental survey, and we did, I see that Mr. Kenwood has, in fact, added the ability for us to do additional sampling if required, as they are working through the high school and the auxiliary buildings on the campus. So thank you for doing the legwork to get that included. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions to my right? Seeing none to my left? Seeing no questions to my left? Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Personnel items, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. The personnel items for this month are as follows. One resignation professional, Alexis Washington, diversity, equity, and inclusion and climate counselor. We thank Alexis for her service to the students of Methacton School District, and we wish her well. Four employments classified, including Kathleen Steck-Schulte and Tanya Jones, paraprofessionals at Skyview, and Kiana Matthews, bus assistant at Transportation. We welcome Kathleen, Tanya, and Kiana to the Methacton family. Four resignations classified, three of which are for retirement. Steven Sharkey, custodian at Arcola Skyview, 24 years of service to Methacton. Anne Fraga, personal care assistant at the high school, 14 years of service to Methacton. And Linda Milligan, paraprofessional at Woodland, 13 years of service to Methacton. We thank Steve, Anne, and Linda for their commitment and dedication to the children and schools they served, and the entire Methacton family wishes them the very best in their retirement. There is one employment professional, Sarah Wright, special education instructor at Eagleville. We welcome Sarah's return to the Methacton family. One change of status professional, John Conran, from teacher on assignment supervisor of special education to teacher on assignment director of athletics and activities. We thank John for, again, taking on this new role. Five changes of status classified, Mark Dregone from custodian at the high school to maintenance mechanic at facilities. Erin Pratt from recess assistant at Woodland to office assistant at Eagleville. Kathleen Shireman from paraprofessional at Woodland to office assistant at Woodland. Kelly Rubendahl from custodian at the high school to head custodian here at Arcola Skyview. And Kim Witten from personal care assistant at Skyview to paraprofessional at Arrowhead. We thank Mark, Erin, Katie, Kelly, and Kim for taking on these new roles. There is one uncompensated leave professional, Gabrielle Arthur, special education instructor at the high school, for the dates that are identified. Three uncompensated leaves classified, Janet Hawn, custodian at Woodland. Lindsay Rivas, paraprofessional at Skyview. And Maria Longenekker, part-time attendance secretary at the high school, for the dates listed. Supplemental contracts for the pupil services department, curriculum writing, math club sponsor, board meeting support, esports fall coach, and DEI liaisons. And two community education swim instructors, Avery Galata and Dylan Becker. We thank Avery and Dylan for taking on these roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Questions from members of the board to my left? Ms. Alston?
Yes, I'm just curious about 10B2 and 10C2, please.
Yes, we were in a situation where we started an employee prior to the board because we had a need to fill that role. That employee then decided that was not the best role for them, and they did resign after one day of employment. So we need to show that employment and that resignation.
Okay, that's how it does read to me, and so thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions, members to my left? Seeing none to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Next on the agenda, we have policy. Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. As you can see, we have a number of policies for first and second read on the agenda. Really, the first reads, there's only one real notable, one there is Policy 620. It was a discussion of policy committee, and there was some language in there about Wednesday being the only day that we cut checks for student activities, which is not a true statement. We do that any day that we can. So we did remove the Wednesday designation in policy. So the policy committee would want to know that. For second read, again, the notable policies there were 103A and 104A. And just so the board is aware, there has been no updates to that list. So Arcola and Arrowhead will be the only two schools utilizing that version of the policy. The other five schools will be utilizing the version that is currently on there for policy 103 and 104. Additionally, policy 200 for enrollment will also have two proofs of residency from this point forward. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Any questions for Dr. Regina to my left? Seeing none to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Regina. Next on the agenda, we have items under other. We have gifts and donations. We approve the generous donations from community members with Backpack Program in the amount of $234.82. Approve the generous donation from the Methacton Education Foundation for the Backpack Program, $11,500 for the 2425 school year. Approve the generous gift from Betsy Tecco to Skyview Library valued at $60. Approve a gift of a football table for the Skyview PBIS program by anonymous community member at $250. Approve a gift of a trumpet to the Skyview Music Program from Bridget Spade valued at $200. In addition, we have trips. We approve the girls' high school basketball team to participate in the Boardwalk Classic Tournament from December 27th to 28th in Wildland, New Jersey. And then we have, under action item 13D, and it reads, approve the Schrader Group architects and CHA district D, and it reads approve the Schrader Group architects and CHA district owner representative to proceed with schematic design and design development phases of a new high school campus at an estimated cost of three million, two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. This motion includes all phases through and including the required Act thirty-four hearing as listed in the attachment. Are there any questions under other? Seeing no questions under other. Madam President, I'll turn it over to you for dates from board members' calendars.
And we have old business and new business. Anything for old or new business? Yes.
I just want to thank the district and especially the nurses and um, especially uh, Dr. Rabanese and anybody else that has uh, put together Simon's Heart that was very successful and serviced many students both inside Methacton and outside of Methacton. And I'm proud that Methacton has done this twice in the last half dozen of years. So appreciate everybody stepping up and, and doing it and really um, providing a service. It's uh, potentially life-saving.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, we will move to the courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. Please submit questions via email to information@methacton.org.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. Findings about a new high school and renovation. For each, I say, what's the rush? In terms of the concept, a hillside location that has more stairs and elevators and less ADA compliance. A too small buildable area. Small size, sixteen hundred student capacity versus an eighteen hundred goal. Huge site disturbance during construction and site restoration. Separate fieldhouse includes a central administration offices. Difficult to expand building and required variances are time critical and uncertain. Education, the concept limits funds to raise teachers' salaries, critical to raise the rankings. One immense gym versus three or four now. Weak on improving the STEM program. Takes back some special ed programs that are better done at the MCIU. Finances. New high school is too expensive. Bonding interest for thirty years is costly. Risk of lower credit rating tied to possible lower index values. Cost is too close to Act one and Act thirty-four limits. Costly mistake to demolish a decent building. Communication and logic. Professional study of renovation should have been done ahead of or alongside recent and rushed incomplete new high school concept study. You're relying on a renovation cost estimates that I would call wild. They're certainly not done to the quality of that uh, the Schrader Group has, has done. Few postcards and undisclosed cost led to three tenths of a percent or less public turnout at open forums. Apartment occupants and businesses receive no communications. Public and possibly staff feedback strongly opposed to a new high school. Little board commentary of public inputs. Renovation, the alternate, alternative to a new high school in Methacton. Fall of a year ago, emphasis by the administration on a new high school with hint of renovation as a fallback possibility. Multiple expert facility assessments failed to mention demolition. Suggestion is to perform a professional study of renovation. Renovation is doable and affordable with tolerable disturbances. It would be a wisely spent one hundred million dollars. And the freshman class could be housed at Arcola to ease several years of renovation and, for instance, replacement of the auditorium.
Thank you very much.
My position on this issue should be obvious to you by now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I begin, I'd like to request the five minutes that I was unable to have at the special meeting you had recently. That was not advertised that you were going to give five minutes to speakers. Even the agenda said the time was limited to three minutes. It was an announcement at the meeting. There was no way anybody knowing, including me, that five minutes we've provided. And also note that I requested thirty minutes at this meeting to talk and was denied by the superintendent, the board president, and the board vice president.
Your, your time has started.
Wow. It just furthers my comment that you could care less what the public has to say, especially those who disagree with where you're going, what you're doing. Uh, Paul, you don't need the word or in that language because you're building a new high school. It's a done deal. Another step was taken tonight by removing all the high school projects from the master plan. So before you vote in the affirmative next week to start spending money on this debacle, a couple of things to keep in mind. With required, with the construction of a new high school, the required tax increases will be substantial. Over the next four years, average homeowners will pay eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars more in school property taxes. This is about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-eight percent more than, than such tax increases without the debt service for a new high school. Given the district's recent tax and spend policies, that tax increase will never go away. It will only be compounded by future tax increases. Construction of a new high school will increase taxpayers' debt service requirements by a monumental amount, four hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Yes, four hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Annual debt service requirements in twenty twenty-nine are currently slated to drop to four point eight million. With this debacle, they go up to fifteen point one million annually, an increase of over ten million. There'll be little room for spending on teacher contracts, any other contracts, educational improvements, or other things that matter, or even, God forbid, a tariff reduction in property taxes. It seems as though this decrease in debt service requirements is a driving factor. Even the district's financial advisor viewed this as a now or never moment in the history of the district. As has been stated before, you've not fully considered all your options. Renovations got, barely got the time of day. The amounts are based on square footage estimates, no details whatsoever. There are many contingencies that are unresolved. How will the school operate during plant construction? Waivers and variance is required from war assessor. As we saw with the field lighting debate, not an easy process that will be resolved quickly. Preliminary design seems like an effort to put a square peg in a round hole. Cost estimates exceed preliminary expectations and will likely go up the further you go. Many issues that should be resolved and addressed before you spend a dollar more on this project. The financial projections are lacking detail. The starting point, the annual budget, has historically lacked accuracy. Projections shared with the board and public lack details. Only one page was provided. Nobody with any financial background prepared them nor reviewed them. There is no effort made in the projections to reduce operating costs.
Thank you very much.
One last thing. Given all of these issues, which I cannot elaborate on because you will not give me the time of day, I don't see anyone in their right mind would approve spending any money on this project without additional research, study, and evaluation.
Thank you.
The work done to date is incomplete. More works to be, needs to be done, and serious consideration needs to be given to a less burdensome option.
Mr. Unshel. Please.
I have much more to say, but the district's timekeepers are telling me I'm done.
Before I start, don't start the clock. Madam Chairman, you have the authority and the power to extend me an extra minute.
I understand. Thank you.
And is that a refusal?
Yes, it is at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dave, you should resign. You should resign. Ms. Perdue, good questions. The answer is, there was and is no plan for renovation. It's a bunch of square footage that somebody put together. Ms. Austin, you want to spend four hundred and fifty million dollars on your why? Here's your why. Fab lab, lunch and learn, apartment program, school store, sensory room, field house, and eight lane pool. Can you tell me, since you're the expert, how that's going to affect test scores? How that's going to affect grades? How that's going to affect people getting into college? You know, how much do you pay in property taxes, by the way? When you start paying your fair share in property taxes, you can go tell me.
Please address me, uh, Dr. Mo.
Federal, federal law, my friends, don't break it, because I will sue. And the average cost per student here, per year, is thirty grand. You're not paying your fair share. Actually, you're not paying your fair share either. Mr. Winters, the board resolution is for repairs and upgrades, but at present, you don't have a plan, right, for the repairs and upgrades. So yeah, you are going to get called out. There's no plan. So, you know, it's obvious that there's a problem. Um, you guys rely on the Bureau Veritas study for all of this, right? For all of it. Only thing is, there was an email sent to Bureau Veritas or by Bureau Veritas to the district. Maybe, I've read it before. Um, they basically said Bureau Veritas was asked to get additional costs from KCBA to be included in the analysis. A bulk of these costs were for modernization, which typically don't get included under FCA, but Bureau Veritas was asked to include it so as to show the high school in poor state and making a case for demonstration of demolition of the high school. You cannot rely on any of this. And if you're going to go down this road, this is where we're going, Dave. Okay? There's a word for this, and it's not good. That's the problem. As far as your enrollment goes, flow was off by a hundred students K to four. Underestimated a hundred, right? Well, that means your high school enrollment that they projected is going to be a hundred higher. They're just not going to disappear, and you're already at your building capacity, but somehow you turned that into a functional capacity greater than the building capacity? And I asked you about that functional capacity, and you, you said you didn't know what the answer was. So there's a lot of, there's so much lack of transparency here. My recommendation will be to put this place into a receivership. That's where we're going.
Thank you.
My name is Juanita De Grazio. I live in Lower Providence, and I've lived in this township for sixty-six years. I moved here as a teenager from the Upper Merion School District. I attended Upper Merion till the middle of ninth grade, moved up here, and we didn't have Methacton High School. We had to go to Norristown. And it was a big change for me because I went from a class of a hundred and thirty-five to a class of almost four hundred. And instead of going right into a high school, I had to go to Rittenhouse because they had, uh, Upper Merion, we went from seventh to twelfth. Up here, we just went, you had seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, middle school, and then Norristown High. My question is, please indulge me in my ignorance and tell me something. What actual grades are in our elementary schools? What are the actual grades in elementary?
We can answer after the comments.
Okay. I also want to know the grades that are in Skyview, and the grades are in Arcola, and the grades are actually in our high school. Okay? Sixty-six years I lived here. My children all went to Methacton. My grandchildren all went to Methacton. But my grandchildren, as they got married and were buying homes, originally started to look in the Methacton School District. This is where they grew up. This is where they went to school. But unfortunately, when they started looking at homes and started to compare prices and the taxes, unfortunately, one was able to stay only because the family home became available to her. The rest all had to buy out and out of the school district. And the majority of all their friends who have been gotten married, ninety percent have had to move to other school districts. And that, to me, I feel bad about because, like I said, it was always through the years, it was a nice feeling that you grew up here, you did everything here, helped each other out. But like I said, my question really was, what are the actual grades in the elementary school? What is Skyview grades? What is Arcola grades? And what is the high school grades?
We asked that at the end of your comments. You have three minutes, and then you can, we will answer.
Okay, that, that's, you know, was my, I said, my children, my grandchildren all went to school here. They all played sports here, were very active in it, and wanted to stay here when they got married. But when it finances came, they've all moved other places, which I feel bad about, but I do get to see them. My question, too, was um, I, when I moved up here, we had Trooper School.
I do apologize. The three minutes are up.
Okay, my three minutes up, that's fine.
You can send your further information to information@methacton.org. It's at the bottom here, and you could send the, your questions to that. It's right there at the, at the agenda, the courtesy of the floor. So I do apologize.
No problem. Like I said, I've been attending meetings, and um, I know it's hard work for you guys to do, and I appreciate the work. But right now, with the finances for everybody, and me being a senior citizen, I know what the tax increase is going to do. Thank you.
Is there any more for courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, would anyone want to follow up on any of comments or questions? I will do the clarification for the last speaker, that elementary school is kindergarten to fourth grade. Yep, to fourth grade. And then we go to Skyview, and that is fifth and sixth grade. Arcola is seventh and eighth. And then our high school is nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, so ninth through twelfth grade. Thank you. And again, you could send your information at methacton.org for additional comments, and all the school board members will be able to read that. Any other questions or comments for the closing? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Graff, can I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Motion is adjourned. Have a good evening.